We're all here, so good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Tuesday, November 15th, 2016 Gardner Planning Commission meeting to order. If everyone will please rise and state the pleasure of allegiance with me.
(inaudible)
Now moving to roll call, starting on my right.
Austin here.
Leimer here.
Mater here.
Brady here.
Roberts here.
Freeman here.
Corum is present. Moving into the consent agenda. All matters listed within the consent agenda have been distributed to each member of the Planning Commission for study. These items are considered to be routine and will be enacted upon by one motion with no separate discussion. If separate discussion is desired on an item from either the Planning Commission or from the floor, that item may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda. Is there any item any member of the commission would like to have removed from the consent agenda? Is there any item, any member of the public would like to have removed from the consent agenda? See, none. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Second?
There's a motion made by Brady with a second by Leimer, that we approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with all in favor. Moving on to the regular agenda. Item number one. Annual review of the comprehensive plan. Receive the annual review of the comprehensive plan and consider initiating certain comprehensive plan amendments. Do we have a presentation this evening?
Evening, Commissioners. Michelle Loniger, Principal Planner. This is probably something a little new even for our seasoned commissioners. Just some background, this is the annual review of the comprehensive plan. State statute actually requires that each year the Planning Commission review the plan, either in part or in whole, and really that's just to make sure that you're aware that the plan's there. Some cities don't look at it on a regular basis and make any changes or suggest any changes and updates for that plan. The City of Gardner comprehensive plan was adopted in 2014. Being that it was so new, we didn't do an annual review last year. And then, we're actually doing it this year, a little later than we had anticipated with the amendment for the, if I can get the name right, I-35 and Gardner Road Interchange Subarea Plan Amendment that we did in June. There was anticipated to be another plan for the intersection of I-35 and 175th Street to follow on its heels. That plan has been tabled for this point in time. We will see it again, but it wasn't moving as fast behind the other one as we had anticipated. So we're going ahead and doing that annual review now. Also talked about in the staff report, a program that staff had submitted our comprehensive plan to, the Comprehensive Plan Standards for Sustaining Places Recognition Program through the American Planning Association. It's a program that recognizes sustainability and comprehensive plans that have been adopted within the past five years. We made it through the second round of review with the plan. Unfortunately, we didn't quite get there as being a recognized plan, but we did receive some good feedback from the review committee, which I think, great feedback that we can look at for future amendments to our plan to just make it that much better. And I put the quote from the committee letter in here. "The Gardner comprehensive plan has a strong focus on existing relationships and standardized policies and practices." Strong focus on existing relationships and standardized policies and practices. Within the principles, the plan's strengths include its treatment of infill planning and historic preservation and historic resources. The plan also has a strong fact base and squared well for addressing inter-agency and inter-municipal coordination. Additional consideration to addressing equality, green energy, and green buildings and hazard mitigation with strength in the plan. So that definitely gives some good feedback for future reference. And that was something that came out of that and was put in here as a recommendation for future amendments. Moving on. Our plan in Chapter 11 has the implementation section. There's over 200 goals, policies, action types of steps in the plan. One of those steps in Chapter 11 is to create an action agenda. And that's what the majority of your staff report is, is that attachment with, and it's actually longer because we duplicated what all the abbreviations mean on the bottom of each page, just so you wouldn't have to flip back and forth. This is a snapshot of it. Really, it gives what page the action's on, what goals and objectives it achieves, what the action or sub-action is. It's actually broken down into the chapters individually. Staff went ahead and put status on there. Achieved, ongoing action, not yet addressed. If you look through that, there's a lot of things that you guys have already done. A lot of it was marked as achieved with the adoption of the Land Development Code. That was huge. Type of action is also shown on there. You'll notice that priority ranking, most of those are empty. Gone ahead and filled in the ones for completed, obviously that were also marked as achieved. And so, in the next year, six to nine months or so, staff is recommending the Planning Commission look at this and prioritize and fill in that priority ranking category with how we should move forward with implementing the plan. Chapter 11 does outline short, medium, and long-term goals and policies. And you'll notice some of these are duplicated also. So that's a basic start in that chapter. We have all these other ones in here that also need to kind of be linked together and ranked. So that's something that we can look forward to working on throughout next year. Another thing I wanted to point out, this is the land use plan map out of the plan. This is something that we held off updating when we asked for the plan that was adopted. We held off putting that into this map. This would really be the area around I-35 and Gardner Road. We do have approved land use for that area, and because we were waiting for that other plan to follow in its footsteps so that we could amend the map once, we hadn't done that yet. So at this point in time, staff does recommend that we go ahead, amend this map, bring those approved future land uses into this map. And then while we're looking at it, the Planning Commission and governing body have approved land uses and zoning changes for the CVS property that's right over here at Main and Center, and the Orshlands property, which is on South Gardner Road. That's different from the land use map, which is okay. That's okay. This is a guide plan. Those rezonings were approved based on all sorts of other criteria. Were supported in other areas of the comprehensive plan. This land use map is one little piece of that puzzle. So since those were approved, we would recommend to go ahead and update this map, just reflect what those current policy changes that have been made since the plan was adopted are reflected in the plan. Helps keep your plan current. With that, staff does recommend that the Planning Commission receive the annual review of the comprehensive plan and recommends initiating the amendment to the land use plan map to reflect the adopted land use in the I-35 and Gardner Road Interchange Subarea Plan and Orshland Site and the CVS site. And then here's a recommended motion, which is included in your staff report. I can answer any questions you may have.
I have a quick one. As far as going through all these and prioritizing them, is there a particular process that we'll use for that, or is that kind of up to us?
You know, that's not something that I've necessarily dealt with before. I'm not sure if Kelly's dealt with that in her previous positions. I think we would be open to suggestions if you have some good ideas of how you think would be a good way to go through them. It's a lot of information. If we want to take it, you know, just take the ones that deal with really the first couple of chapters regarding land use. You know, so you have the residential, the commercial, the industrial land uses, and maybe you deal with that. We can probably go back and look at them and say, okay, these might be good things to look at together, so let's look at that. We'll definitely guide you. We won't just say, okay, here it is. So, because it gets overwhelming, I'll tell you, it gets overwhelming looking at them. And some of the actions, subactions are the same, but they really mean something different when they're in different categories. So it may be something about transportation that is linked to the commercial areas downtown, maybe duplicated in one of the other sections, but is related to, you know, land use or green space or something like that. So you have to really kind of take it in the context too. So, did you have any suggestions of how we could break that up?
Well, I was thinking we have that planning process coming up for the Main Street corridor. And it would be nice if we could go back and sort of review the recommendations that's already in our plan that would be impacted by that plan. At least we can set some priorities there, so that'll aid the consultant in knowing how to move forward based on that information. So that'd be a good place to start, maybe in January.
Yeah.
Because the project's probably not going to start until March. So you could take even a couple of months just to review that, because I think a lot, probably about half of those are actually impacted by that plan, if that sounds good.
And we can kind of play it by ear too, depending on what your agendas are looking like. Your December agenda's looking really full, so we wouldn't want to add something on to that. You know, we might have some of the early meetings in 2017 that may be a little less busy, that we can take a chunk. And I think we can, you know, talk about it and, you know, pull out some of that stuff. When Kelly showed you the information last meeting about the program that we're doing, she had pulled out a lot of the, well, pulled out the goals and policies and subactions relating to downtown out of there for that staff report. So, I mean, we can definitely focus you guys, and so you're not completely overwhelmed.
Yeah. I think that's very good direction, as things start coming down in the agendas that you guys are seeing, just start adding those into the agenda for discussion. And if anyone ever here has questions or thoughts?
Sounds good.
Okay. If we don't have anything else for staff on this item, I would entertain a motion.
I move that the Planning Commission receive the annual review of the comprehensive plan and initiate a comprehensive plan amendment to update the land use plan map to reflect the adopted land use in the I-35 and Gardner Road Interchanges, or Interchange Subarea Plan, the Orshland Site and the CVS Site.
Second.
There's a motion made by Austin with a second by Leimer, that the Planning Commission receive the annual review of the comprehensive plan and initiate a comprehensive plan amendment to update the land use plan map to reflect the adopted land use in the I-35 and Gardner Road Interchange Subarea Plan, the Orshland Site, and the CVS Site. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries with all in favor. Moving on, excuse me. Item number two. Text amendments to the Land Development Code. Hold a public hearing on and consider text amendments for the following. Item A, TA-1601, Article 3, Table 3-1 of the Land Development Code Regarding Notice for an Appeal of Administrative Decision Application. Item B, TA-16-02, Section 3.02.E of the Land Development Code Regarding Review Criteria for a Final Plat. Item C, TA-16-03, Section 7.03.D.4 of the Land Development Code Regarding Color Palette Review for Detached Houses and Duplexes. Item D, TA-16-04, Section 7.02.A, Table 7-2, and 7.04 of the Land Development Code Regarding the Minimum Interior Side Setback for the Detached House, Suburban Building Type. Item E, TA-16-05, Section 7.02.B, Table 7-3, and 7.04 of the Land Development Code Regarding the Maximum Building Height for the Large Commercial Building Type. Item F, TA-16-06, Section 7.02.B, Table 7-3, and 7.04 of the Land Development Code Regarding Building Height for Non-Residential Building Types. Item G, TA-16-07, Section 7.05.C of the Land Development Code Regarding Access Limit for the Suburban Yard Furniture Type. And item H, TA-16-08, Section 7.05.C of the Land Development Code Regarding Percentage Allocation of Space for the Suburban Yard Furniture Type. Good evening.
Good evening, and thank you for the live introduction.
You're welcome.
Kelly Drake Woodburn, Chief Planner, give you a presentation. So basically, we adopted the Land Development Code on June 20th, and it became effective on August 1st of this year. And as we discussed at the last meeting, staff had observed some practical concerns and presented those to the Planning Commission at the last meeting. And after consideration and comment, the Planning Commission agreed to initiate all those amendments. We're not discussing all of them tonight, only eight of them. We're going to take them in batches, probably only a few for the next meeting, because as Michelle said, we do have several action items in addition to that. So, we're going to talk about eight of them this evening. Your recommendation is to hold a public hearing and recommend the proposed text amendments, TA 1601 through 1608, to the Gardner Land Development Code, to the governing body for approval. You can recommend those as presented in your staff report or as changed per your discussion this evening. One of them, I believe it's the second one, we gave public notice on just a portion of that one, so we'd want to hold that one back till one of the future batches, because we need to give another public notice on that. But the other ones, we feel are of a priority concern that need to be addressed as soon as possible, so we would recommend those going forward. Okay, for the first one, this is a pretty simple one. We have some standards in Table 3-1, addressing appeals of administrative decisions. And this would just be to take the checkmark box from the column that says Posted Notice off of that table, so that administrative decisions do not require posted notice. And, you know, we did check this out with Ryan Dink, our city attorney, and also we did receive confirmation from Chris Brewster that this would be an acceptable change. So I guess maybe the plan, I guess, or would you rather kind of discuss these, ask any questions, make a consensus on each of them, and then move to the next one?
Yeah, let's do that. We'll go one by one, and then we'll go through the formal motion of opening the public hearing for anyone who wants to comment.
So that's really all the comments I have on that one.
Any questions?
Okay.
All right.
Okay, the second one is for the review criteria for final plat. And it addresses specifically the construction plans for utilities and infrastructure and public facilities, meeting technical specifications. And if you'll remember, the practical difficulty is that they seldom have those constructions planned put together at time of final plat approval. So we did some research with other communities to try to find out what they do, and there was a real variety of choices. But basically, some of them addressed it at the preliminary plat process, well, one of them, that's pretty rare. Some of them did want to see the construction plans at time of final plat approval, and the regulation said, you know, indicated that they would be approving those before final plat approval, but I don't know that they always implement it that way. They could also conditionally approve it, not having those plans. Others of them wanted those construction drawings before the governing body approval. More of them wanted them before the plat was actually recorded. Some of them didn't even look at the construction plans until after that, before construction took place. So, being such a wide variety of what's going on in the area, we just tried to recommend what we thought would work best for the City of Gardner, which would be, let's keep the process moving, let's, you know, go through the final plat approval, let's go ahead and let the governing body address the accepting of the dedications and easements, and then, you know, they have two years to record the plat before it would expire. So that would allow them to have that time to go ahead and get those construction plans to our various departments, engineering, and have those approved. So this, however, required changes to two sections of the code. I only anticipated one to begin with, but this is the first one. And on the slide, it has what it currently says, and then what we're proposing. And the red is the proposed change. So, and basically that just says, that allows you to go ahead and approve that final plat conditionally on those plans meeting all technical specifications before the recording of the final plat. If they have the construction plans, then, you know, we will make sure those meet them before your final plat approval. But if not, we'll condition the approval. That's what that says. The second part of this one, and I know this is really small text, but basically, just saying the same thing, that we added that before, that the process is, you approve the final plat, we accept the dedications of land for public purposes, we find that the construction plans meet our specs, and they pay the excise tax if it's applicable, and then they can file the plat, record the plat. So that's basically what that one's all about.
Questions or comments? Okay. Clear on that one?
Okay.
Okay.
Well, the next one is about the color palette, which really kind of created some concerns among our builders about why, you know, they were having to submit color palettes for single-family homes and duplexes. And their concern, or well, pretty much we found out that nobody really requires them to do that, so this is why they were so surprised. So we're recommending a change as follows on this slide. Basically, this first provision, A, came from one of those color palette standards, but I moved it up into A so that would apply to all building types. So all building types, we would be looking at whether those colors are low reflecting, subtle, they're not bright, fluorescent, or intense. Now, that's just the primary facade color. They can have accents of other colors. So anyway, this also says that we would look at that for detached house and duplex building types before we would issue that certificate of occupancy, so they could go ahead and get their building permit, the builders can go ahead and then negotiate with the owners if that's the case, and eventually come up with a color, and then we approve that color before we give them the final sign-off on the house. But for all the rest of them, everything just stays what it was. So that's, everything in item B is the same, except it accepts detached houses and duplexes and re-numbers those standards.
Any questions from this one?
Is the terminology detached house and duplex building types consistent with the New Land Development Code language, and are those the only two building types applicable? There's not a compact duplex or anything?
Well, because there's several versions of detached house and a couple of versions of duplexes.
Okay, so those are the main.
So, yeah, I think it would include all those.
Questions? Any other questions? I think we're good with that one, Kelly.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to the fourth one. This one is about the interior side setback for detached house suburban building types, and it's reducing that side setback from nine foot to seven foot. And probably for a reason that you all probably remember, but just to refresh your memory, it's basically just to enable, on our existing 70-foot wide lots, for people to be able to build those third-car garages that seem to be in such demand. It does make it so that people can't really store their vehicles, you know, their recreational vehicles on the side or in the backyard even, they may not be able to get there. But if they can have an extra garage, maybe they'll store them inside. And this is consistent, I think you can see in the next slide, with what other communities in the area are doing. So it makes it easier for those builders, I guess, to be able to use their plans across communities without having to make one specifically. And I did talk to Chris Brewster about this one, and see if he had any concerns, if this would kind of wreck anything that he had sort of envisioned in our Land Development Code. And he said, as long as, you know, we still keep what we have for the neighborhood building types and some of those other building types that are new, that are an alternative neighborhood plan, you know, we won't hopefully have everything be this, this one building type. And we are putting together strategies to try to encourage those other building types to take place, and we'll talk to you about those in the future. So he really didn't have any concerns about this, and he understood what we were trying to do with this. So basically, it's just kind of keep the ball rolling on our neighborhoods that have already been started, and keep it viable for those developers, and really to address what people are wanting in homes, it seems to be.
Any questions? Okay, I think we're good there.
You got on that one? All right. Halfway there. Okay, number five. This is the one that we realized, we didn't have any way to build taller buildings on larger lots in our more intense commercial zoning districts. And so, we're suggesting the best way to be able to incorporate this is to change the building type standards for the large commercial building type from three stories and 40 feet in height to five stories or 65 feet in height. is to change the building type standards for the large commercial building type from three stories and forty feet in height to five stories or sixty-five feet in height. And so the zoning districts that would accommodate this kind of building would be C3, M1, and M2 districts.
That's, yeah, pretty.
That's the basic.
Any more questions on this one? Okay? We can move forward?
Okay. Okay, this one here is kind of the same idea, but it's a more comprehensive look at all our non-residential districts. Building height is limited in two different ways. It's measured from average grade to the highest point of the roof. We have the overall height standard, so it can never, ever be higher than that foot, you know, number. But we also have story height guidances. And for that, residential uses, the first story would be nine to fourteen feet. It should be nine to fourteen feet. But non-residential, the first story should be twelve to twenty. So we're actually allowing the potential for taller ground floor, you know, first floor for non-residential uses. But in most cases, the way it is right now, we were limiting the height of the non-residential uses more than we were the residential uses. And Chris said that was because he just, his mind was envisioning the flat roof. But this will, you know, he also looked at this, kind of ran some numbers and figures and felt that this is a comfortable change, not really going to get us into trouble. And it's pretty easy to remember. Everything pretty much goes up ten foot per story of what we would allow. Like, for example, two stories, thirty-five feet. Three stories, forty-five feet. And four stories, fifty-five, and five stories, sixty-five. So it's rational progression.
Questions?
Yeah, why, well, a couple of questions. I'm trying to figure out how to formulate them. On the residential heights with the number of stories still differ from the non-residential heights with the number of stories, what's the benefit in not having them just be standardized?
I guess I didn't really think of it that way. I just thought about, let's not mess with the residential. That seems to, you know, be reasonable based on what we previously had. And I was just looking at what would be reasonable for non-residential. So there's really no reason.
And then my, I think, my other question kind of goes broader in scope into why, why do we limit these at all? What's the purpose or value of limiting these?
Limiting height?
These levels, yeah, height and stories. I mean, the building code will limit you based on your construction type and occupancy. And I understand if we don't want to have massive skyscrapers in some portions of town. But to holistically say, no building can be over this height or this many stories, or even have the story limit with the height, I'm just struggling a little bit with the overall benefit of that and the purpose of it in the standard.
Yeah, that's like a very basic, back to the beginning. Zoning ordinance have always regulated height basically just to address what you mentioned, which is the massing and the scale of things and to try to keep things in similar scale, in close proximity to each other. And to allow, you know, a variety of things, but together where they belong, you know, where we decide, not just willy-nilly anywhere. And so that way, a property owner can be assured if they make an investment in an area and they think this is something similar to them is going to happen, then something comes in five stories next to them that they didn't anticipate, and it can really mess up that microclimate of their own lot. And so it's just giving people some assurances of what can actually happen if they buy property in a certain area. And the residential, like I said, we do limit the story height on them more just because of the scale issue. And they're less intense use, and so the lower heights reflect that relationship to the lower first story height. And in general, residential uses are typically, you know, shorter story heights, but...
Other questions or comments? Does that answer what you were asking, Brad?
It does. I don't know that I, I don't know that I fully agree with it, but I know we've had those discussions before, so. Is there any instance with these limitations where it could still potentially cause an issue? Or are we controlled enough with what building types we can build within the certain zoning districts to make sure the building heights still stay relative to each other?
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm confident of, that we've allowed these building types in the appropriate districts. I didn't change the stories that Chris had originally put in there. And that's one of the major considerations that he put in there in his thought process. So the only thing I really changed was the overall height in feet, except for the large commercial, which you just discussed.
Does that help, Brad? You have any questions?
No, I'm good.
Okay. We don't have other questions? Move on to, uh, item G, number seven.
Okay. So this one is about the suburban yard frontage type, which is, um, let's see. So currently, it's twenty-five percent. The access width limit is twenty-five percent of that lot width. And currently, it's intended to apply to that whole area between the front property line and the front building line. So whatever that twenty-five percent number is, that'd be driveway width all the way back to the house. We have found this to be difficult to apply just because of our, on our seventy-foot lots, that would be a figure of seventeen and a half feet. And this is one of the things that the builder spoke to you about last meeting. I think he discussed if you have two cars next to each other, you really don't have any room to get out, open your doors without having to get into the grass. And most places do have two cars parked out in their driveway, not in the garage for whatever reason. But, um, so what we thought, we'll change it just a little bit to get back to what Public Works Standard was previously, which was twenty-two feet for those basically two-car driveways. It's still a maximum of twenty-four foot per access point. But we're also suggesting that we apply that just to that first ten feet of frontage depth. And beyond that ten feet, they could then flare it out to accommodate a third car garage or to go build a pad for their RV on the side of their house, that kind of thing. So, um, let's see if I had anything else there. As we said last weekend, or last weekend, last meeting, we do want to make it so that pedestrians don't have to walk past, you know, big driveways, three cars wide, when they're out walking and enjoying the sidewalk. It will improve aesthetics not to have quite so much pavement. Having more green area within that front ten-feet area is also going to help with runoff, stormwater management. So we do think there needs, that we need that limit. And we're just trying to find a good balance there. I think I have a picture here for you. This is an existing neighborhood. And this sort of illustrates how this would change what they've done. So in the future, the driveways would only be as wide as the red line up to the ten-foot mark, and then they could flare it out further. So I just tried to pick some existing ones that would give you an idea of what it would look like.
I think that's my house on top of that corner.
Seriously?
Not the one with the red line, right?
Correct.
Okay. You're in complaint.
Like, I know that's my house.
So where's the ten-foot measure?
Do the hot tub on the deck and the back.
Yep.
The ten-foot measure from the property line.
And that's my side of the car. But anyway, side note.
Now you're famous.
Well, I just recognize my neighbor's RV that's parked on the side there.
Yep.
Well, and that, yeah. I agree with the presented approach, I think. But interestingly though, in that specific example, that RV will be driving over the grass if you take out that front corner in order to park there.
Well, hopefully, they would drive out their driveway instead of going, like they...
I don't mean in order to make the turn, next quarter house or...
Yeah.
They're going to be going through the grass.
That's a very large RV, but...
It used to be parked aside, on the road, so it's...
Oh, is that... We do have the gross vehicle weight rating now. I don't know if that takes care of, or if he's that big or not, but...
Other questions for Kelly on this one? Can you move on to item H?
Okay, now this is similar. It's also for the suburban yard frontage type. We had an allocation of space standard that was not workable at all. And I asked Chris about that, and he said, I think we messed up calculations on this one. So we first were talking about a thirty percent, a zero to thirty percent hardscape limit. We started looking at some case studies of what our existing context is and what would seem reasonable. And so we thought we could increase it to forty percent max. And we really don't feel it's necessary to have to have those similar, you know, percentage limitations for turf versus landscape. We're already addressing how much landscaping they need to put on a property anyways for frontage trees, street trees, interior plantings. And so that's enough kind of to handle, other than having to come up with these percentages. That just gets to really extend the staff time on review of these plans. And so we would like to suggest that you change it to say the remainder is either landscaped or turf.
Questions on this one for Kelly?
I think we might have a picture here.
Oh, yeah, there's a picture. You like pictures.
Yeah, so this, you know, without that dotted line here, I don't know if you can, yeah, see. Anyway, with just the twenty-one-foot driveway and the twenty-five-foot length of the driveway, that comes to thirty percent hardscape. If they were to go in the ten feet that we just discussed and then put, you know, an extra lane basically on there, eleven foot wide for that fifteen feet, that would come out to almost forty percent. That's just an illustration.
Any questions?
I think we need to go back to that last one because what I brought up in the sample on the paper, I think we're off the mark here. If we could pull up the picture again?
Oh, sure.
We're missing it when we put in the ten feet of frontage depth because I'm just thinking of my own house. And if I have a car parked in my driveway and we have that ten feet, I can't get out of that garage. And the same thing with this trailer. And really, we're not accomplishing any goal as far as sidewalk safety or anything else when we set it back as far as we see in the diagram. I think we're way off, and we need to strike that. As we look at it again and see an applicable purchase, and really, from a planning position, I understand the sidewalk portion completely. We're going well beyond the sidewalk, at least as it's diagrammed here on the screen. I think we need to go backwards from there. Because if you look at, first of all, just like Brad said, you're over your grass to get that trailer out. But if you have a third car garage just where the trailer is, that car can't get out unless there's a car, if a car is still parked in the driveway in the other slot. If there's a car out there, you're not going to be able to get out. Everybody's going to be in their own grass, and then you've got rutting, other issues. So I think we need to go back and strike what we've got for a setback. If it's going to go beyond the sidewalks like that, I think we're off there.
If it's going to go beyond the sidewalks like that, what do you mean?
Right now, where you have the notches cut out, that wouldn't be applicable anymore. We're going in too far for people's property and to accommodate what they're trying to do, especially with the people that are trying to put pads and other things for trailers. They're not going to be able to accommodate that. They're going to be in their yards, or worse yet, they're going to be in their neighbors' yards, and we have closed pieces like we have here. So I feel we need to strike that completely, and the setback should only be to the extension of the sidewalk.
Okay. So you want to limit the access width to thirty percent with a twenty-four feet max applicable only to the right-of-way?
Only to, only to the, yeah. I mean, I have no problems with the limitation of the street access itself. Once it reaches the sidewalk, I mean, I know, and we've got the other pieces in place as far as hardscape and such, that's, we've pushed it back too far. We're going to create more problems than we're going to solve by this.
So we'd just be eliminating the front footage required?
Basically, we'd be able, these people with the driveways, they have them right now. The two that are together would be perfectly within code the way they exist. Now, this one that's over to the right might be actually a little bit wider than what it should have been by what our codes would be. And I have no problems with bringing the width in itself at the street side. But when we take it into the yards and cut out that notch that they have, those notches are in there for access. And if we cut those out, we're creating more issues in these people's yards.
So taking those two amendments together, you only want to limit the amount of hardscape in the frontage area based on that zero to forty percent allocation limit, but not limit the amount of hardscape in the frontage area based on width?
Well, I think I'm going all the way back before to the hard... I mean, I don't think we have the hardscape terminology at all in the, uh...
Seven point oh five?
Seven point oh five.
Yeah, right now it's only...
So that's the one where I think we want, I'm speaking of that we want to address and change first. And I think we need to just strike the first ten feet of frontage depth.
Okay, so now you're talking about amendment TA sixteen oh seven.
No, you're talking about oh eight.
Well, the striking the frontage depth, I thought you were talking about...
Oh, you're saying strike oh seven, the limit of thirty percent?
Right now, it's only twenty-five percent.
No, only strike out the first ten feet of frontage depth. That cuts out what we're seeing for those access points past the driveway in the diagram on screen. Whatever we need to cut to get to there is what I'm going for.
Yeah. So it would say, basically, it would say that the access width limit for that frontage type would be thirty percent with a twenty-four-foot maximum per access point. But then we have to make it clear, because the way it is right now, it would, we would have to apply that to the whole frontage area.
And you could concrete it all.
Well, when we use that ten-feet standard and we use the ten-feet of frontage depth, the way it's diagrammed on here, and if this is incorrect, then I need to be educated a little bit better. It's starting that the frontage depth starts from the backside of the sidewalk. Where does the frontage depth line begin?
At the property line, which is basically in this collection was... Yeah, it was pretty close to the sidewalk there.
We can't go that far with it then. I don't know how we would do it differently.
How about if we apply it only to the first five feet of frontage depth?
I don't, I don't want to apply it at all. I mean, and if I'm off, if I'm on an island, get me wrong, but if we go back and look at the diagram and not the phrasing, these notches that we see that go all the way to the sidewalks are completely appropriate in my point of view. They don't impact the safety of crossing those sidewalks, and they make the access for the intended use is easier to be done. So if we take those out, we're creating access issues for homeowners and future homeowners or people that might want to expand their driveway to have access to be able to park a trailer in the same way. And it serves us, I don't see a practical purpose for us to say, you can't do that.
If you want there to be no width limits in that frontage depth, that frontage area between the property line and the building line, we would have to say this access width limit only applies in the right-of-way.
That's true. I think that's where I'm getting at. I think that's where I'm getting at. That's what I'm getting back to.
Okay.
Yeah.
I agree with Heath on that because this RV, there'd be no way they could get out or a third car garage or whatever.
She doesn't. I mean, I'm her next-door neighbor. She's a crafty driver. It's tricky. But, she does not farm her yard doing it. And that is a long RV sitting out there.
But, I mean, without an RV that has a three-car garage in the front, my house, I couldn't get out without it going all the way to the driveway like that, of that garage, unless all the cars are in the garage.
Wait, if you only had one car parked up by the house and it was close to the house, you probably would be able to pull behind it.
None of my house can.
It's not easy.
Right. I don't, like, if I'm by myself, I can say I don't agree with it, but I think we need to strike that side of it out. I'm thinking personally for my own home and what all the homes in my neighborhood have built to have the three-car garage. We're changing the code on so many existing properties that we're going to create a split.
And what I'm saying to achieve what you want to do, we would, and if we don't want to word this one differently than the rest of them, we want to keep the same framework, then we would say the access width limit is thirty percent with a twenty-four-foot maximum per access point applicable only to the area within the right-of-way.
If that accomplishes that, then that's fine with me.
But, Heath, I heard you saying though on this house to the west, uh, it's on the far right on our map.
Yeah.
We do not like how the driveway from the sidewalk to the street comes all the way out.
Well, the fact that this one, I don't have any issue with the width of the driveway at that twenty-four-foot maximum like we're talking about. Though, I think what they're showing in this diagram is this one might actually be thirty feet maximum.
Right.
So, I don't have a problem with the twenty-four, but that can flange out from the sidewalk, what passed the right-of-way is where it is. That solves the issue for me, the twenty-four-foot maximum, but it doesn't have to go into the setback at all.
Now, and just to clarify, then the next amendment that we talked about, that would limit, you know, what can be in that frontage area, how much pavement, to only forty percent of that frontage area. That's still quite a bit, but it would still have a limit. Like, they couldn't cover their whole lawn, front lawn with, you know...
Right.
Right.
Heath, you mentioned, you mentioned as your example, even with your own house, with the third-car garage, if you had another car parked outside and you were trying to get out of the third car, you couldn't get out. Is that the only example that you're kind of going by? I mean, not to sound petty, but just couldn't move the car or...
No, and that's entirely fair.
Sure.
It's the only practical example I have to compare it to. I don't have many other homes, but it's even looking at the picture. This trailer won't be able to get out if they have to cut their driveway to that extent. And so, I just look at the practical uses that we have right here and then what I have for my everyday and just see, I don't think that, and I really don't know, either aesthetically, from a planning perspective, any, what difference that notch makes once it's past the sidewalk. Now, I get the part where we want to limit it to forty percent and they may have to make some adjustments there because we don't want it to be, we don't want you to slab from front to back. But, that's where the forty percent in the next part comes to that still gives us a mechanism for some level of enforcement beyond there. So, I think we still kill both of, or accomplish both of the goals without being so restrictive that it's imposed.
I agree with that. Everyone's consensus to modify to the item number seven. That second part to, so it'd be applicable to the right-of-way? Is that how I...
Applicable to the area within the right-of-way.
Could you recap it just one more time, just like a read-through, just so I'm clear?
Be full amendment, how we agree? Okay, it'd say the suburban yard frontage type has an access width, well, it wouldn't actually say that. I would just show it in the table. That has an access width limit of thirty percent with a twenty-four-foot maximum per access point applicable to the area within the right-of-way.
Looks like we have consensus on that change. Before we formally open the public hearing, are there any last-minute questions or comments for staff? Great, we will now open the public hearing. If any member of the public would like to comment on an item, please come forward, state your name and address for the public record. Seeing nobody come forward, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion to close the public hearing made by Freeman with a second by Limmer. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Public hearing is now closed. If we don't have any additional questions or comments from staff or from you guys, I would entertain a motion on agenda item number two.
On sixteen oh two, we need to hold off on that one.
Okay.
You can still recommend it to the governing body, but we just wait to present it to them? Not with the next ones, but the ones after? No? Okay, she, my boss here.
We're going to need to republish it and hold a new public hearing based on the published amendment.
Oh, I forgot, yeah. That's the whole reason we're holding off on it.
Pulling that one out and making it seem correct. We're just going to pull that one out of the motion and then make a modification for consensus of the commission on item number seven. So, with that stated, Brad, you were in the middle of making a motion. I'll let you continue if you'd like.
I do. The planning commis, uh, let's see. I move that the planning commission recommends that the governing body approve the following text amendments to the Gardener Land Development Code, TA sixteen oh one, as written, TA sixteen oh three, as written, TA sixteen oh four, as written, TA sixteen oh five, as written, TA sixteen oh six, as written, TA sixteen oh seven, modified to reflect the suburban yard frontage type has an access width limit of thirty percent with a twenty-four-foot maximum per access point applicable to the area within the right-of-way. And TA sixteen oh eight, as written.
Second.
Great. We have a motion made by Austin with a second by Freeman that the Gardener Planning Commission forward the text amendments as recorded on record to the governing body for approval. That would be just to repeat sixteen dash oh one, sixteen dash oh three, sixteen dash oh four, sixteen dash oh five, sixteen dash oh six, sixteen dash oh seven as amended by Commissioner Austin for public record, and sixteen dash oh eight. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with all in favor. Good job, Brad.
Thank you.
Thank you. We don't have any additional discussion items or anything from staff. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion made by Brady with a second by Limmer that we adjourn for the evening. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Meeting's adjourned, all in favor.